Vermillion City Council meeting scheduled for Monday, May 6, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. We'll come to order. Katie, will you please call roll?
Here.
Here.
Holland.
Here.
Humphrey.
Here.
Genoine.
Here.
Lutler.
Here.
Murrah.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Miracle.
Here. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recollect for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes for April 15, 2024, special meeting, and April 15, 2024, regular meeting? If so, are there any changes or a motion? Motion approved by Counselor Holland, second by Counselor Genoine. Any discussion? All is in favor to approve the minutes. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or by saying nay. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next item is adoption of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? Are there any changes or additions at all? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda by Counselor Price, second by Counselor Humphrey. Any discussion? All is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or by saying nay. Motion carries. Visitors to be heard. Under visitors to be heard, persons addressing the council shall be -- use the microphone at the podium. Please raise your hand to be recognized or go to the podium and state your name and address. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard on any topic not on the agenda. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For adjourned items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item, and after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff, any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item, and public testimony will then be closed. The topic will be given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss this current agenda item unless a council member moves to allow another person to speak with unanimous consent from the council. Questions from the council members, however, may be directed to the staff or a member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. Are there any visitors to be heard at this time? Sir, please come forward. State your name, your address.
Good evening. My name's Don Eichoff. I'm with Eldorado Properties. I'm here -- I appeared before council last spring, June 6, I think it was, but we own property on East Main Street, 121 through 113. And we -- the reason I came last spring, we feel the sidewalk condition that was created due to the renovation of the sidewalk has created a hazard in front of our property, and we were asking that it be remedied. And I think at least one or two council members, I don't know if council members change year to year, but agreed with me that it was a hazardous condition. And I was told at that meeting that would be looked into, and it'd probably take a while, but they get back to me. And it's been here almost, so I haven't heard anything, so I thought I'd follow up. And I'd just like to make another comment that I didn't make last year. If the city doesn't really feel it's hazardous, I don't know why, but it is, but the comment I'd like to make is that we reassessed $30,000 in increased taxes just for our property, for the portion of that work. And to be left with that sidewalk like it is in front of our property is ugly, and it's hazardous, and it's not all right. And so we're still asking that the city does something with it. I'm assuming the renovation was done to meet ADA requirements or something, but regardless, there's -- I've been a contractor for 50 years. I know there's things that can be done to fix that. It wouldn't be terribly expensive. You know, just so happens, our property is right in front. It's a little point because it's right by the street drain, but that's it. I'm just here following up because we never heard back.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from council at all?
Block 121 through 113, East Main Street?
Yeah, 113 through 121 and a half, I think it is. Because the half is just the basement.
John, I don't know, is that?
We're the only ones that I know of on that whole street that got that condition just because we happen to be a little pointless.
Have you had any meetings or spoken with either the city manager or the city engineer, anybody on this topic?
Yeah, I've met with the city engineer out at the site and -- from when I originally complained, and those ballers were installed with little grab handles on them, but they're eight foot apart, and the grab handles, the posts are low. One of them, I see, was -- they drilled and put rebar on the sidewalk because it was already tipping over. But the grab handles, I went and tried them out myself. The grab handles are too low and in the wrong spot. So if somebody actually is going to go over and use one, it'd make it worse, in my opinion, because they got -- they'd have to reach back like that and bend over. And I assume that was a kind of a temporary fix until something, you know, correct could be done.
I'd like to meet with you later to discuss this in further. Obviously, I'm able to today because it's not on the agenda. Can you leave your contact information, and I'll reach out to you later this week if that works out?
Certainly.
Thank you.
And would I leave that with Jose?
Yeah, you can just write down a piece of paper. That'd be fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other visitors to be heard? Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item. Public hearings will have an annual renewal of malt beverages and South Dakota farm wine licenses. Katie?
Thank you. I received applications from all the establishments listed on the public hearing that was attached to the packet. The police chief also prepared a report indicating the performance and when compliance checks were completed at each establishment since July 1 of 2023. Due to those compliance checks, there are no failed attempts since the last compliance check. Therefore, no management plans were needed this renewal season. The city council has the ability to renew license on two criteria, suitable person and suitable location. With respect to the location criteria, licenses have previously been approved for all of the locations. As for the suitable applicant, we did have one applicant that did send us in checks, and since the renewal, they were non-sufficient funds. Therefore, they still owe us money, and you can't be a debtor to the city and approve a license for that. We have sent them a letter, and those funds are due on May 27. For that, I think that we should do a motion for that license contingent on that NSF check being paid, and then a second motion for the remaining. Another part of this is that the city receives $150 per application and the state also, and along with that, we do receive $50 per lottery machine if they have them. So following the input from the public hearing, the city council is asked to make a decision on renewing the licenses. If a motion is to deny, the reason needs to be included in the motion.
Thank you, Katie. Visitors to be heard on this. Seeing none move to council for discussion. Discussion by council. We want to address the recommendation. I'm sorry, Counselor Humphrey. Thank you.
Sure. This is either for Katie or for John. I noticed at the City of Vermillion Liquor Store, there was like nine successful thefts or 10 attempts. Is that why the big remodel was done?
I can't speak to all of the theft attempts that they had there, but part of it was moving the smaller bottles, if you will, the airline-sized bottles as they used to be, were called, back behind the counter and removing some of those. Now whether -- I can't tell you how many of those were taken, those bottles, but that was part of it was to move the staff closer to the door than what they were previously.
I know in the meeting that we had their -- I think that was part of the reason -- the reason of moving the point of sale closer to the entrance as opposed to the middle of the space was because then you had to pass by somebody a little bit where they -- their back wasn't turned towards the door when they were ringing somebody up. Does anyone want to make a -- or any comments or concerns or reference to the delinquent one? The delinquent, you said there's a delinquent check or fee?
Yep. There were two NSFs.
And your request is to if we just post -- or not postpone it, but contingent?
Contingent on that being paid in full.
Should we make a date on that contingency? Would that be best?
It is due May 27 in our office, so I would coincide with that.
Coincide with that?
Yeah.
Have you -- and you've already sent that notice out?
Yes.
When did you send that out? Approximate?
Last week.
Counselor Lutler?
May 27 is a holiday, so maybe we should make it the next day.
Good call. So while the 28th is the day after, Counselor Price, did you have something?
I did.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify. So in the memo, it says that no reports, you know, where we get like the management reports, were necessary because there weren't any complaints checks?
Since the last renewal season in December.
So the ones that are listed in the report were before that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's what I was confused about. And I can turn it over to you.
Okay. Counselor Ward?
If we are going to make our recommendation contingent, do we need to name? I would think we would need to name the business.
Yes.
Okay. And so can you tell us who that is?
Yes. It was Kareem, Inc., her freedom station.
Okay. So Kareem, Inc., is that right?
Yep.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And we need to do those two separate motions?
Oh, so we need to?
The contingent one first and then the remainder.
All right. So I will make a motion to approve of Kareem, Inc., receiving their -- continuing their malt beverage on-off license contingent upon payment of required receipts to the city.
Do we need a date?
By May 28.
Is that a weekday?
That'd be a Tuesday after Memorial Day.
That sounds wonderful. May 28.
Second.
So motion for Kareem, Inc., be approved on contingence of the debts received. Is that accurate? By May 28, by Ward, and a second by Counselor Price. Any discussion on that motion? All is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or by saying nay. Motion carries. Now the remainder of the items. Motion to approve the remainder of the establishment. Counselor -- Hallig, second by Counselor Humphrey. Any discussion? All is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item for public hearings will have a first reading ordinance, 1516, amending title 15, land usage. Go ahead, Jose.
Thank you. I apologize. I'm going to read the memo verbatim just because it's a little confusing, so I hopefully don't bore you too much. But in 2013, the Vermillion Era Chamber and Development Company, or VCDC, led a drive to create the Bliss Point Plan Development District, or the Bliss Point PDD. The need for creating the Bliss Point PDD came about due to a shortage of housing in the community. The VCDC purchased a large tract of land to provide housing options and for limited commercial uses. The area that you see on the screen right now, Area D, is within the Bliss Point PDD, and all of this space here would be the area that I mentioned, the Bliss Point PDD creating for commercial uses. So you do already have one of the parcels being utilized as such. The commercial lots were located along the area fronting West Main Street and at the intersection of Rockwell Trail and Stanford Street. The proposed amendment being considered tonight was requested by the VCDC would only affect Area D by allowing offices, commercial construction, and industrial as permitted uses. These offices that deal with those types of businesses, such as Mr. Kevin Bliss's Construction, fits a proposed use, which is this one here that's already existing. Since the zoning district boundary is not being affected, the VCDC was not required to gather signatures or mail notices to the meeting -- of the meeting to the owners in the area. However, the notice has been published in the plain talk advertising the meeting. Staff received questions from two residents in the area regarding the amendments. The original Bliss Point PDD created in 2013 included Area D, the use of office. This would have included all types of offices, such as accountants, consultants, contractor offices, et cetera. The Bliss Point PDD was amended in 2019 when the city removed the use of office and created offices, commercial construction, and industrial, and offices, non-commercial, non-construction, and non-industrial. The change was to differentiate between the use -- uses and to avoid a construction-related office, specifically a contractor shop with an office, from being constructed in an area that may be considered offensive to the public. This amendment was part of the city's effort to complete a large amendment to the 2008 zoning ordinance. The VCDC was approached at the time when the change was being considered. At the time, the VCDC thought restricting the types of offices to those not related to commercial, construction, or industrial businesses would be appropriate for the area. The current changes being considered were proposed by the VCDC. The amendment would include offices, commercial, construction, and industrial as permitted use in Area D. In addition, the proposal would also require that any outsized storage be fenced in. If adopted, the amendment would increase the possibility of a business moving into the vacant spaces within Area D. The City's Planning and Zoning Commission considered the amendment at their April 22 meeting. The commission asked what instigated the proposal, or the proposed amendment, and a member of the public asked what comments had been received from the neighbors. It was explained that the proposed amendment was requested because of business similar to an existing business, Mr. Bliss's, in the areas considering to move to the vicinity. Staff further explained that the neighbors were curious about the proposed amendment. After discussion, the commission recommended 7 to 0 to adopt the proposed amendment. The VCDC has paid the required fee. Staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend the city council advance the ordinance amendment for consideration at the second reading on May 20, 2024.
Thank you, Jose. Is there any visitors to be heard on this topic? Move to council for discussion. Discussion by council. So Counselor -- is it Price? He was pointing to you.
Jose, I just have a question about the clear differentiation between offices, commercial construction, and industrial, and offices, non-commercial, non-construction, non-industrial. And like, the sort of perceived fear that commercial construction and industrial offices might be, you know, offensive to the neighbors. Usually, things that are offensive to neighbors are like noise, light, and equipment, like on the premises. So is that a significant distinction between those two categories, those items, or what could be perceived as offensive?
So in distance, what we were trying to do was avoid having essentially a contractor shop. So somebody -- and I'm not trying to pick on Mr. Bliss here, let's say, but if Mr. Bliss would have constructed the same thing that he has right now, but on the side of his office, he would have had a pile of gravel, or a load of lumber just sitting there, or equipment being stored outside, or something of that sort, then that would be the portion that would be considered, or might be considered offensive by some of the neighbors. We do have a lot of these uses within the community, and some of them are kept a little bit neater than others. I'll say Kalins, for example. That would fit within the contractor, construction business, and industrial. But if you go over there, everything's kept inside. It's very orderly. You don't necessarily see it. I mean, it's in a business area next to a small strip mall and next to a pharmacy. But then you have other instances within the community where it's a little bit more, everything's maybe stored outside, where it could be stored within a fenced area or something of that sort. So that's the kind of nuisance, I guess, that we were trying to avoid having by allowing offices of that type.
Just to clarify, whatever goes in there, because there's covenants for Bliss Point, do they still have to follow those covenants, even those covenants are residential?
So if I -- and I believe that the covenants do not apply to Area D. So.
Any questions? Counselor Ward?
So the definition of offices, commercial, construction, industrial would allow for someone to have their materials outdoors as long as there was a fence obstructing the view from neighbors?
That would -- I think that the applicant, if you look at the way that the ordinance was proposed by the applicant, I believe that that's the reason why they asked for the fence, for the area to be fenced. The applicant this year, but I mean, that's one of the items that they do have in the ordinance, subject to screening of all outdoor storage of parts from view. So -- and I believe Mr. Bliss as well, it's hard to see here just because of the picture, but you might be able to see a shadow on the north side, that Mr. Bliss actually constructed a fence to try and mitigate some of the view from the neighbors. And again, it's not that Mr. Bliss might have stored something outside, but he usually keeps it very tidy. And I'm not trying to pick on him. There's nothing wrong with whatever he's doing.
And I'm more concerned with the stuff that isn't built yet than I am.
Sure.
Right. And so is there a definition of the kind of fence, or does the obscured from screening from part -- from view, does that force a -- someone who owns such a building to build a fence with no, you know, pickets, or, you know, just to be a solid fence, or does it?
So the definition right now for the fence type, I don't believe there is a requirement as far as what type of fence. However, if you -- if we wanted to have something a little bit more robust, I guess, as far as having it function more as a screen, then we do have the ability to follow 155077 more directly, which is already referenced within the applicable standards. And in there, and I'll just read it, 155077F says a fence wall or shrubbery six feet in height and of a character necessary for adequate screening shall be installed or planted when a commercial use, such as this one, is located adjacent to a residentially used property. So that one already says that you have to have something that's six feet tall, and it has to be, you have to actually not shield you from whatever they're storing on the other side.
Okay. So my -- the answer to my question is yes. It would?
Yeah, I think it would.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, and that's why I asked with the covenants, because I also know that in that covenant, chain link fence isn't allowed in there, and that -- that's why I ask, because obviously chain link doesn't -- you can still see through and everything.
I mean, you can put a chain link fence with a lattice, similar to what we had at one point at the -- at the baseball field. So it is possible to use that, but again, the Area D is not, I'm pretty sure is not covered under the covenants.
Any other questions from council? Counselor Genoine?
So the offices, that restricts the use, like, overall, right? Because when I first read this, I mean, grammatically, I was a little confused by the comma between offices and like what kinds of offices. I thought -- I didn't understand that that was describing the offices, I should say. So can you tell me what an industrial office looks like and what kinds of things they can do in an industrial office, for example?
I mean, I don't know if I can truly describe it for you, but I would say if you have, let's say, Masaba, or an industry of that type, maybe they would actually have an office within the downtown area where they could actually invite customers to that location to talk about projects or sell their -- maybe that's where they keep all their accountants and whatever or not. Maybe that's where they design their projects, and then they actually have their manufacturing site wherever the Masaba plant is right now. You could also have the same thing with like a landscape park that could have their office in a downtown setting or within this district, and then they actually have all of their equipment. If they have, they'll also do landscaping at a different location. So you have something that's a little bit more welcoming to the public, rather than having the public wanting to landscape my house. Well, I might not want to go to the industrial site to talk to everybody over there. Maybe I want to go more to an office setting. So that's the difference, I guess, that you just have a little bit more of a softer, but it's a little bit more welcoming over here for the customers necessarily.
Okay. And is it typical to describe the kinds of offices that are allowed in?
I don't know if it's typical or not. That's the way that we approached it. I know that prior, it just said offices, but that encompassed everything. And that's why Mr. Bliss was able to go there, because he was opening an office. It just so happened that he's also attached to a larger garage where he stores material or equipment. But if we would have kept it the same way, then we wouldn't be having this discussion, obviously. But yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think so I guess in the end result, I'm a little confused. So with what Mr. Bliss has, they didn't -- we didn't have to do this?
Correct. Because that was done before the 2019 amendment.
Okay. I think I -- I would definitely like to look more into this and just get some of the details. Obviously, today's the first reading though, so. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was, I was
Counselor Ward?
I was wondering if Jim Peterson could come up and maybe talk to us about what you see as the impetus for this.
So Jim Peterson, Vermillion Chambers, property owner?
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. He's asking a question of the members of the public, so we're working good, so yeah, we're fine, correct. Sorry, go ahead. Yep.
And you know, if you close the public hearing.
We close it for visitors to be heard, but persons of the council can't address anybody from the public if they have a question, as long as it's presided through, so you're good. Go ahead.
So, the Chamber is the owner of this prop, well, Area of Bliss Point and Area D that we're talking on. And if somebody, which we do have for the lot between, my easier term to say it, between Kevin Bliss and Bunions, somebody wants to purchase that from us. So, if they wanted to do something like Bliss has today, we can't do it, which I wasn't aware of. So, if somebody was going to make something like Kevin Bliss, we wouldn't be here, correct?
Correct.
But because the change in nineteen, we're here, the individual wants to do something like that. At first, I thought we'd have to write to the neighbors, because it's an ordinance change, we do not. But I went and talked to neighbors next door on both sides and across the street, and everybody's comfortable what's going to go there, which would be a building that looks like Kevin Bliss, but that also go to planning, zoning to get approved, make sure it meets the criteria. The individual or firm knows it has to have the, either shrubbery that blocks any view, or, you know, aesthetically, it's going to be appealing. So, that's what I know. So, if there's any other questions, I can please?
Go ahead.
So, currently, I'm, and I'm sorry if I didn't, if this is in the memo and I didn't just understand it, but currently, what can be put on those lots right now? Is it only housing?
No.
No.
It's only commercial?
Yeah, you cannot have any housing, and when you say commercial, it's not all commercial either. It's very specific, it's very narrowed.
Okay, so offices do not count as?
You can have offices within that area, just not this type of office.
Right. They made this distinction between offices and then offices, commercial, construction, industrial.
Well, I don't, I guess.
So, if you made a Kevin Bliss today?
An office is just an office, I mean.
But it changed, right? So, I said, okay, you're going to make something similar to a Kevin Bliss, and we can't do that. So, if you, so I'm trying to say, well, we're told it's going to look like that, or if there's a piece or two equipment, it's going in the garage with an office, we can't do that today. So, that's why we're standing.
Because of the kind of business that they do in the office?
No, because the rule change from, I'll let Jose do it.
Essentially, yeah, essentially, it's because of the type of business that they do in the office. Essentially, that's, I mean, that's.
So, could a doctor's office go in there right now?
Yeah, doctor's office could go there, but then that would actually fall, I mean, that would still fall under offices, or, I mean, you could even put a hospital.
But nothing having to do with construction, or?
Correct. You cannot be, you cannot open a, you know, ward construction business out of there, and then you also have a pile of rock on the side and whatever or not, and I go there and hire you, and you send your crew out of there, and that's where you have all your, all your gravel and pipes, and yeah.
But, okay, I'm sorry, can I keep going, Mayor? Yeah. Not every office is going to have a pile of rock, and so I'm just, does every construction office is going to have a pile of rock next to it, or are they going to have, you know, I was just kind of imagining that that's not necessary, and so maybe we have to address these stuff that's outside only and not just the office part.
Well, at one point, we actually were having people asking to have an office and also wanting to store materials on site.
Okay.
I mean, we actually have some in town already.
Yeah.
So, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not looking to out anyone or anything like that.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, why, why do we?
Why did we split hairs?
Why, yeah, why are we splitting hairs on the offices when maybe what it do is control what's outside the office in the lot?
Just a lot of different ways of doing it.
Yeah, and I, I'm kind of looking at our council here to see if I'm, just tell me to leave it alone.
Oh, my God.
And I'm here because if somebody wants to make something like a Kevin Bliss, or store a truck inside, or have an office inside or outside, or have certain things that are aesthetically appealing, we can't do it today.
But we're only worried about what's on the outside.
I don't know what you're worried about, I'm just trying to.
And that's why, that's why, and when I look at this site, that's why I point out Mr. Bliss.
Yeah.
He fits perfect whenever you want to do it, because he has the office, he has equipment, and it's very well-kept and manicured, and it looks nice.
Right.
And that's what we would like to see. But at the same time, doesn't mean that if you would have left it alone, the guy next door would have done the same thing.
Right.
So, the way that we chose to remedy that was to have a distinction between the types of offices.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I see what you're getting at, because I know, you know, one of the concerns that I see here is obviously, we're, housings are a big issue in our community, we know that. There are, if you go back to that map, there are three housing lots bordering those two empties, one to three, depending on which space, bordering that. But then if you go straight to the north on Cornell, we're having an issue with lots being sold because of similar type things in the backyard.
Yep.
And that'd be my only concern, is if that same appearance we start having down there, are we going to have difficulty with those lots being sold for residentially used to address housing needs? That's my concern, on what's being, that aesthetic appeal. With what Mr. Bliss has, no problem, it's great. I guess that's my only concern on that.
The map on Rockwell, two of those have homes on it, and the third one's on a contract, the person knows what it is.
Correct.
So, I'm just filling you in.
No, I'm talking, oh, you're talking, you're talking about the ones right here?
Yes.
Those three?
Those three.
Okay.
Two have, a house on it already that's sold.
That's right.
Twinome, so the one next to it is under contract, so they know what's going to go there.
Thanks. Okay, so it's just that one lot then?
Just the one lot here, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Genoine?
So, just to be clear, if we make this change, they will be allowed to put a business that is very similar to what Kevin Bliss has?
Correct.
Because he has equipment stored at his office.
He has equipment stored in this, inside, inside his garage shed.
Because it's inside, and, oh, okay, all right.
It's, we're not looking at creating a, a construction office with a bunch of material and equipment stored outside and somebody's.
I am not looking into doing that.
Well, I mean, that, that's, essentially, that's what I would perceive neighbors being concerned about, is what I'm saying. And I know, Mr. Peterson, you said that you spoke with him. On the flip side of it, I understand if somebody wants a home for business, we need to figure out a place or accommodate space for them. What, where's a good spot for that, is what I'm asking. And if something like this is much like Mr. Bliss, where it's all stored neat, agriculturally inside, or a area where the neighbors are okay with?
And we've had this piece of land for ten years.
Right.
So, it hasn't worked, not on the tax roll, we're paying taxes on it. We've also, with this client, looked all across the city, what property would work for other people, and it came down to this one meets the need.
So, I want to be clear, because now, what the mayor just said made me think. If we pass what's for the second reading in here right now, will someone be able to build an office building and have materials outside, but that they would just have to be shaded, or, yeah, kept away from public view?
They would have to be screened.
Yeah, screened, thank you. Okay. So, everyone gets that, that there would be some, perhaps something outside?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's why I asked about the covenant, that's why I asked about the covenants, is because I do know, like I said, in the covenants, you can't have a chain link, even though we did do the slats, I didn't know if they would, being that, if that doesn't apply to the covenants, they could do that.
They could do that, I believe.
It wouldn't be a solid fence, potentially.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a wooden privacy fence or vinyl fence, no. It doesn't have to be that, I guess.
Well, I would move that we, move it to second reading for tonight.
It is a local owner, local business, everybody, please, but we're doing it on behalf of the Chamber.
I don't have any problem with the concept, I guess, I just.
No, I understand where you're coming from.
That we're doing it.
Motion to advance the second reading by Counselor Ward and a second by Counselor Holland? Thank you. Any other discussion? Did you have something?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this. Is there any way we could limit something like this going in there? I see Area D is all one. Between Bliss and Bunions, really, what else is going to go in there but what, what they want to do? You know what I mean? And then not have something like that facing Stanford Street and Rockwell Trail.
So, the only way that you would be able to do that is by rezoning?
Okay. It'd really be nice if we knew what was going in there, but somehow, I don't think you're going to tell me that tonight.
Going into Area D between Bunions and Bliss is similar to a Kevin Bliss building.
I don't have a problem with it, I guess, as long as there's a fence there and the people to the north know about it, and they're okay with it. I mean, it's bringing another possible, I don't know what it is, a business, if they're going to sell things out of there, it's bringing more money, tax money into the city, we're selling a lot. How about it?
So, there's a motion on the table to advance the second reading, any other discussion? I was in favor to advance the second reading, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pardon me saying nay. Motion carries for the advanced second reading. Next item on the agenda. Our whole business security of ordinance fifteen fourteen, title three, administration, chapter thirty, this will be some cleanup language for council terms and term years.
That's correct, Mayor. As noted, this is presented, I think, back in March, when our intern was looking at some items, this is to clean up the language. It does remove the term alderman from our city code, the home rule charter, we use the word council member, and then back in two thousand six, two thousand eight, we were transitioning from two-year terms to four-year terms, and so it removes that language which governed terms for people elected in two thousand six, seven, or eight. We would recommend approval of the second reading of ordinance fifteen fourteen, as it is the second reading, a roll call vote of the ordinance is needed.
Thank you, John. Any visitors to be heard on this topic? Seeing none, move to council for discussion, any discussion by council? There's a motion, or, sorry, question?
Just thanks to Elijah for cleaning this up, I'm really glad to see this cleaned up. So, move approval.
Motion approved by Counselor Price, second.
Second.
By Counselor Humphrey. Beat you to it. Any discussion? All right, we'll move to poll vote. We're missing one.
Wake up, Steve.
You're not done yet. Votes unanimous, nine ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Next item, the water main replacement project for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Just a little background, the project was designed, completed was in March of this year. On April tenth, we opened three bids that we received for the project, and then on April fifteenth, council awarded the project contingent upon the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources approval. During their review of the project, DANNER ended up rejecting the award of the project as the project had only been advertised once, which did not comply with South Dakota Codified Law five dash eighteen A dash fourteen, which requires all projects to be advertised twice. D A N R has advised the city to reject all three of the bids and rebid, re-advertise, and rebid the project. Due to the timing of this, staff would like to split the project into two parts, a base bid and a bid alternate. We would also like to extend the original completion dates to help attract bidders with this, kind of, this, because of this delay. This project was financed with an SRF loan and a South Dakota Housing Development Authority, ARPA grant. The delay caused by this rebid process will not have any impact on the SRF loan. The grant required for the construction, or required the construction to begin no later than September fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. With the proposed plan that we have, we expect that that would still be met, so we shouldn't have any issues securing that grant still. With that, administration recommends rejecting all three bids received April tenth, twenty twenty-four, for the water main replacement project, and allowing staff to re-advertise and rebid the project.
Thank you, Shane. Any visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion? Move approval.
Second.
Motion to approve rejecting of all three bids?
Yes.
And a second by Counselor Price. Any other discussion?
I'll go both and I have a question.
Why don't you go ahead and do it now for discussion, yeah?
The, right, rejecting the bids, they did nothing wrong, so can they just resubmit the same bid?
They can, if that's what they choose to do, if they want to just go right back with the same bid. We are changing the project a little bit, like I, like I mentioned. What we're going to try to do is, before, it was always going to be completed this year, we're going to split off press view and make it so that that can be completed next year, just because we're losing about a month plus of construction season.
We'll have to modify it a little bit.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? I was in favor of the motion to reject the bids, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pardon me saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on, new business, we'll have a project plan for the TIF number eight for Jolly School.
Thank you, Mayor. This TIF District number eight was created by the city council on April first of this year, following the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. So, now, before you this evening is kind of step two in that process, which is the project plan. Basically, what the project plan explains is where the money comes from to make the improvements, how that money's going to be utilized, and then the plan to repay the debt that comes with this project to set it up. So, as just noted, we have a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant that we'd be applying to this. We're also looking at using five hundred thousand from our second penny reserve funds, and then two hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred dollars from our general fund reserve. So, that's kind of where the money comes from. What the money would be used for, as the TIF plan lays out, is it would be used for the raising of the current school building, grading of the site, plating the property, installation of the water and sanitary sewer line connections to those respective housing lines, installation of the new water line in South University Street, which was just mentioned, slip lining of our sanitary sewer line, both in South University Street and Linden Street, excuse me, Linden Avenue, installation of the new curb line, well, the bus loading zones will go away and will pull the curb back out, so it'll be consistent through there, relocation of streetlights, and then I think the public will enjoy creation of a public park. Those are the, how the money will be utilized. Then the plan to repay that debt, with lot sales, we anticipate those thirteen lots will sell around twenty thousand, the final number is yet to be determined. The plan proposes that three houses would be constructed in two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven, and four houses in two thousand and twenty-eight. Using those numbers and our estimates, this TIF would pay off in about ten years, which is great for us as a community, because it would place all of that land minus the park onto the tax rolls. I want to be wrong on how quickly those houses get built, because the sooner those houses are built, the sooner that that income comes in from property taxes, and we'll be able to retire this TIF district sooner. But with that said, that's kind of in a nutshell what project plan, with the project plan for TIF District number eight for the Jolly School site is about. We'd recommend approval of the project plan for TIF District number eight.
Thank you, John. Any visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion, Counselor Holland?
I read it through as best I could, and I just want to compliment you and the finance office, that was a heck of a job, that's a lot of work. And I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Price?
Oh, Mike, Mike was on. Just this sort of question for the public to know, so we have in the memo that the plan is to have the housing lots available for sale in twenty twenty-five. Do we have, is there an idea of how that works, if people are interested in purchasing those lots and building homes?
Sure. Well, thank you, Councilmember Holland, for the comment, compliment. It was a lot of work, and for Katie and I, it was also kind of a learning experience, we had some old ones to build off of, but yet neither one of us had created one in a very long time, so went back to some old ones and put it together. So, that was exciting and interesting to do as well. To Councilmember Price's question, one of the items to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, city council, be plating of those lots, and I anticipate probably latter part of this year that that would come forward. I think the policy decision for the council will be, do you as the city council want to sell those lots, which is something that you did do back with the Bluffs Housing Development? Individuals would fill out a purchase offer, and then come before a city council, and then you would approve that, and we could begin the process to transfer it. We've also looked at, do we transfer it to the VCDC, as was done at Bliss Point? Sometimes that makes it a little bit quicker, because it's, if somebody comes in the day after a meeting, it's at least two weeks until it could be before the city council. So, we haven't finalized that process, but I anticipate that our recommendation as staff to city council will be to establish sort of the parameters of it, the pricing, that sort of thing, and pass that to the VCDC, it's a little bit quicker and easier. And pass that to the V C D C, it's a little bit quicker and easier for the public to obtain a lot when they're ready.
And John, Kirk from I am assuming the V C D C has, have agreed to doing such a fact if we do move forward with that?
We've had preliminary conversations and talked to him about it, but I guess we haven't laid out the parameters, so they. They could say no if they don't like the parameters that are provided, but I anticipate that'll be a partnership for our community.
Counselor Ward?
So the permit application. Has that already, have we already approved that, in that people, if they wanna build a house, have to go through the historic society first?
Yes, so December of last year is when the covenants were adopted by the City Council, and then they were filed. And in that process, it lays out what the parameters are, and so the initial building application. With that exterior style and those features that meet one of the three criteria, will go before the Historic Preservation Commission for them to say, yes, it complies with that, or no, it does not.
And it's only on the outside, right?
Yes.
And the city still plays a role, right, after that point, I mean, we play the primary role in making sure that everything is up to code and all of that, correct?
Correct, it'd be inspected, and just like any new construction built throughout the city. I think basically you will have a little bit more control to make sure that the initial build on the exterior reflects the historic. I won't say standards, but the historic feel that we want to create for the neighborhood to match the surrounding properties.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Bill? Motion approved by Counselor Holland and second by Counselor Price, any other discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pardon me saying nay? Motion carries. Next item would be a resolution to create a TIF number nine for lots in the Jack Powell addition.
And if I could have Jose help me with this one here, Jose, I'm sorry, we have a map that would show the proposed area. So the Jack Powell addition, I think since the get-go, when the council first was talking about purchasing this property, who first purchased it, we always had anticipated that a. TIF district would be needed to help finance the public improvements that would be placed in this development. Just to kind of recap, what we're looking at right now is the sources of funding that we have are just a little bit over a million dollars of a loan from our Light and Power Fund to help with the financing of it. Our budget included five hundred thousand of second penny funds to help with infrastructure. We were successful in obtaining just over one point four million dollars in the South Dakota Housing Development Authority grant to help with some infrastructure costs and part of it. There's also, the county's going to be paying the city approximately half, the, half the cost for the standard building for the first two legs of James, which I'm sure will be pointed out. Look at that. So that first portion of James, the county will be paying half of the standard development cost for that. All said, we still estimate that those funding sources, we're still gonna need approximately about one point eight, one point nine million dollars to help close the gap in terms of the public and infrastructure improvements that we're making. We have bid all of the entirety, we have awarded the bids for the entirety of James Street from where, about Stanford Street, to where it continues south of Baylor Street. Baylor Street east to west, from James Street over to Stanford. The water and sanitary sewer lines, as well as the storm sewer, the grading of the site, all those things are included in the bid packages that have been awarded by the City Council. The Planning and Zoning Commission did review this at their April twenty-second meeting, and they recommended approval of the area shown in, it's kind of yellow, it's kind of a faded color yellow, but it's yellow nonetheless. As I noted in the memo, the council may want to consider, I'll say altering those boundaries a little bit. And I say that from the standpoint, I guess I'll back up, once the boundaries of a TIF district are set, they cannot be changed. And so if you include something that you didn't wanna include, or you forget to include something, once those boundaries are established, you have to, by state statute. Maintain those boundaries for the longevity of that TIF district. How those funds are used can be moved from one category to another. For example, if you need more for wastewater than you do in water, you have latitude as a City Council to move the use of those funds, but you cannot change a TIF project boundaries. I offer that for a couple of standpoints. One is that there's some discussion about Block Three, in the kind of the northwest part of the yellow there. We have had some discussions with a potential developer about that, who has expressed interest in potentially what's called a developer TIF. Which would be a TIF just solely for that particular lot. And so the entirety of what is included was everything presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I did note at that point in time that that was a lot that maybe would have a little bit more discussion than the balance of those. So we want to, to make that point to the City Council and have you sort through that aspect of it. I might note that what is shown there is thirty-two single-family lots. Some of the smaller or narrow, more narrow ones are anticipated that those would be, like a twin home type development. And then, what are they, about ten, if I remember correctly, single-family lots, those would be detached, single-family lots. And then you have what is Block Five, south of the Law Enforcement Center, that we anticipate would be a multifamily, and then Block Seven, just north of there, that would also be multifamily. I also reference that in that, you know, there are pros and cons, the more developments you have, the more property taxes that are collected and can retire that debt sooner. The con is if you, or if we will be missing some potential development on any of those lots, in particular Block Three, if a developer's TIF is what it takes to make that happen. So by including it in there, that money can only be used for the property tax payments related to the initial TIF, TIF nine, it could not be used to help the developer with any costs that they might have. So I toss those out as, I think this one's a little bit more, Jolly School's pretty easy, in terms of, in comparison here, that was a very set site with less flexibility. This is one that you're talking about, a fair amount of raw ground, it's roughly about eighteen acres, I believe, shown in yellow there. Maybe a little bit more than that with the Law Enforcement Center site, but nonetheless, you have some latitude. For the public who might be watching, just where the Jack Powell addition, or track is it, Jack Powell Track Two is at, that is largely park ground, and so there would be no property tax generated there. Like the Law Enforcement Center, there's no harm, no foul in including it, but it's not gonna raise any money to help retire the property tax, the TIF debt on that property. Lots one and two, and Block One in the northeast corner there, those, we've had some discussions about commercial development there. Those could just as easily be included if you wanted to. You know, how those develop, I will say our focus has been primarily on housing, and so when we structured this TIF district, we were thinking predominantly about housing. And so that's what led it, led us to develop this. Again, the real debt that we're trying to pay off is the balance of the street, infrastructure, construction, water and sewer and stormwater. Again, muddy the waters.
Thank you, John. Any visitors to be heard on this? Move to council for discussion, discussion by council? John, if we tip this Block Five and Block Two? Thank you. If, just from gathering what you described me, a developer, if we're to do it, what you call a developer?
A developer TIF, and in essence what that is, I'm gonna maybe compare it a little bit to the Vermillion Technology Center, the V T C. That is in a TIF district by itself, so all the property taxes that are collected there go back to, in this case, the V C D C. To help with their debt on the infrastructure that they have to build their building, that's a developer's TIF, it doesn't per se have the same public benefit. As a TIF like we're talking about here to pay for public infrastructure.
Which is essentially what we're, what you discuss also, possibility of Block Three.
Correct.
If a developer came in and said, hey, I'd like to develop this, but need some help on developer TIF, we cannot do anything in Block Two or Five? If we were to prove it, correct?
Block Three and Five.
Or any one of those, be it that matter.
Correct, that's my understanding, and reading it, and our conversations with Robin Carlson, with the Department of Revenue, is once the boundaries of a TIF district are created, they cannot be altered. They could be altered, I believe, and if you canceled or closed a TIF district and started all over. But that's your only option.
Counselor Lawrence?
Thank you. I had a couple of quick thoughts. I'm probably more comfortable removing Block Three, just because I think that there are ideas, and there's already interest of what could go there, so like. I think if we were to remove Block Three from this current TIF proposal, I wouldn't be too worried that it would go unused, right? I think there's an idea that will already go in there. Block Five, I, I, my gut tells me should stay part of the TIF proposal. But my next question then is. The seven-foot strip, the title to that, and can we set TIF boundaries if we don't have title to that land yet?
Yes, the short answer to that is yes, you don't, and the example all the SLUs is, we don't have title to Jolly School yet either, we have an agreement, and so. You might say you don't necessarily have to have willing participants to be part of the TIF district, but you as a governing body can set that up.
Thank you.
Counselor Holland?
Travis, I disagree with you. I think Block Three should stay in there, the person who was interested in that, it's kind of unique. Have we ever had a, given a TIF to a contractor in the past? I don't think we have ever.
Again, to the closest is probably the V T C one. In that it was a, it's an economic development TIF for development of that building. The developer in that case is the V C D C. So it's a quasi-public, right, it's not a full-primed entity. I will just say, we've had, if you would ask me that question a year ago, I would've said we've not heard that push as much as we have probably the last year with. Be it interest rate changing, price changes, materials, what have you. I hate to say this, it's probably almost not a week, but maybe I'll say at least once a month, somebody looking at a prospective building, not even in this area, will ask about some sort of developer's TIF. The world has changed a lot in the last year in that one, and I see Jim's head nodding because it's.
They'd like the city to pay for everything.
Yeah, and I think that's where, you know, you're the policy balancing act as a City Council, what's, what helps the entirety of the community? And in terms of raising our property taxes, or not raising our property taxes, raising our property values in the community versus incentivizing development. I think that's become a much larger question than it might've been a year ago.
And once again, I still think we should keep Block Three, the developer who is there, changes the definition of what he wants to put in there now, and I disagree totally with what he wants.
Counselor Genoine?
Yes, I think that regarding Block Three. I think we should take it out for now while we work through what we have to discuss with Block Three, and if we decide later that we want it in a TIF. Can we add it, can we create a TIF for Block Three? So, because we can always make another TIF, right, we just can't remove it from the TIF if, once it's established.
I would agree with you, yes, we, if you will, if, I'm just hypothetically, what I think I heard you say is if Block Three is removed. Block Three could hypothetically become TIF District Ten, but Block Three, once TIF District Nine is added, cannot be added into TIF Nine, if that makes sense.
Right, but also if we did proceed with this plan where Block Three is in. TIF Nine, and then decide, oh, why didn't we do this alternate plan with the developer TIF? We can't, we can't convert it, so.
That's correct.
I think we should take it off of the table for now, and do what we can, what we know, what I, I'm thinking we probably mostly all agree on. With the rest of TIF Nine that's proposed here.
And that was, that was one of my concerns and why I asked the question, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring Jim Peterson back up again to speak. Because I know we had meetings on housing issues and you were gonna look into, now you may not have, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot. But we had some discussion on whether or not that developer's project TIF, that's what you call it, occur. And so my only concern is if we bring that five, two, and three in, and now all of a sudden we have a developer where it is likely we need to do something like that, now we can't do that. How common is, are those TIFs? Where it goes.
We're still researching that, should have more data by next month when I talk, you know, at a meeting for an update. What I've learned, and John alluded to, the more developers or other communities we talk to, that is one of the first things you hear, what do you do from, let's say, lack of better term, developer's TIF? There's something to help them out. And in looking at this on the multifamily blocks, the three that we have up there, or the one block to be determined. I think that may, we may need to go that route of some degree, based on what we've learned from Yankton and other cities that we've talked to. When we come back to council, we just say City X or Y or Z, and we'll share what we've learned or how they've helped out. Some of it's simple, and some are just fees that they waive, but they are doing inducements to get them to come to the community and build. And that's pretty much across the board, that we've talked to five cities.
Counselor Ward?
What was it, a week or two ago, John, that we met with the, a proposed developer for Block Three?
When was it?
I think it was last week.
Yeah, okay. And Lindsay was there, and Katie and John were there, and. You know, he was pretty convincing to me that the times have changed, and that if we want to build. If communities want to build, not just for million, but if communities want to build, they are having to sacrifice more than they have had that sacrificed in the past. Because of cost of materials and labor and a different economic situation. That was reinforced, as the mayor was pointing out, in a, in a meeting that we had on housing with the university and bankers and V C D C and county. So I think at the very least, we should keep Block Three out, and I guess, I would like to ask John Prescott, what is the pressing need for setting a TIF right now, or should we wait? Or Katie, she seems anxious over there, what is the pressing need that we do this now, instead of later when we know who might build where?
So we need to set this TIF because we have construction going on right now, we have those roads that are going in there, and that's what we need the money for. I did run some calculations, if we take out all of the apartment blocks, we wouldn't have enough money to make this TIF sufficient. We would need at least, I think that's seven and five in there, for it to be sufficient for us to get it paid off within twenty years.
What about Block One with the commercial lots?
That's not in.
No, but if we were to put those in.
I have not run calculations on commercial lots for this TIF at least.
And what about Block Two and Four? I mean, if we just did those.
We would, that's what I have in here, we would be short.
Okay, I'm not gonna admit it very often, Steve, but we're thinking on the same line here.
Yeah.
So we have, we've actually talked to developers or builders on all the property. You know, some have approached us on different scenarios, so some are, little further discussions or not, but almost every one, even on the, on individual homestead, well, what, what can you do for me?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm worried about.
But even, yeah, so that's, I'm just saying, you know, there's, I know you are having discussions Block Three, there's other discussions on the other blocks we've had on behalf of, you know, the city, the community. So there is interest, it may come down to different pieces.
And that's why I was asked with the calculations, if you knew, and we had Block One, Two, and Four, and didn't have Three and Five in there, would that be enough to what? Counselor Genoine?
And to that note, would the business that goes in the commercial spaces make a difference at all?
To some degree, you know, it depends on the amount of square footage, I don't mean using extreme examples, an ATM, right, you're not gonna have much of a building. To a convenience store, a bank, or something like that, I mean, just square footage is gonna make a difference. In terms of what the property values would be there, so it's a little bit more of an unknown, I guess, you know, we didn't run too many numbers on. We didn't run any numbers on the commercial, because we're not, that's such a wide array of what potentially could be there.
Counselor Lawrence?
Well, on that point then, as a hypothetical. Setting a TIF boundary that would include commercial property without. I guess what I'm asking is, would a commercial entity be concerned about entering into a TIF district that had already been established? Or would a business not necessarily care if they were going into a TIF district or not? Because we would be setting those boundaries. Because we would be setting those boundaries that somebody would then have to basically opt into building there. I don't know if that's a, figures into the business's, you know, thought process.
I, I guess I'm not completely sure anymore how that figures in there. I mean, typically or traditionally, TIF districts are used to put in public infrastructure and so the benefit, the beauty of it to a lot of these entities in the past would have been, great, the street's been put in there, I don't have an assessment for street or water or sewer. Things have changed and they're, some are asking for more than that. I think it's a balancing act. Oftentimes, national chains don't necessarily look for that. They make their decision, numbers, people, traffic counts, competition, all those sorts of things, versus if you have a less national, maybe a regional or a local business looking to do that and it's, it's a little bit, it's a little much tighter budget, then they might look for some sort of incentive that a TIF potentially could provide them. I, I think the one thing that definitely helps them is the, the stepped formula of property taxes for new development in, in our county and in most counties in the state used to be the 20, 40, 60, 80 that the property taxes step up. It's now a seven-year formula instead of five and I, I can't rattle that off the top of my head as, as close as it would used to be.
Any discussion? Go, go ahead.
So the only potential change that's discussed in the memo is, current calculations are that the inclusion of Block Three is not needed to pay off TIF Nine, inclusion of it would help it be retired sooner, but calculations show that if we don't include it, it would still pay itself off. The inclusion of Block One isn't, hasn't been calculated at all, one way or the other. And Seven and Nine haven't been researched either, like, we can include Three but not Seven, or, and Three, we didn't look at those at all. The only one that's discussed in is whether or not we include Block Three and not including it, we could still pay off this TIF.
So I did a rough estimate on removing Block Five and Three and it would be very, very tight to get that paid off in 20 years. We'd have like one year of wiggle room.
And that's with One or without One?
She said she didn't.
I didn't.
Okay, gotcha.
So it sounds like what's in front of the council today is to basically decide if we want to include Block Three or not in this TIF, because that's the, the options that have been calculated and being presented to us as viable.
Katie, would you have, so we still have another meeting this month, if we were to have those other calculations, would we still be okay with the timeline if we were to review this again at the next meeting?
I think that's more of a question for John, but we are accruing costs right now that aren't covered by the TIF. So the longer that we draw this out, the more we'll have to pay out of second penny or general fund.
That's why I ask if, how long, I mean, at the next meeting, is that a huge?
No, I mean, I think, I don't remember the bill tonight, is it 200 and some thousand on there related to Jack Paul?
Yeah.
Just 216, I think it is.
Okay, so, I mean, in, were we talking, I think the number, Katie, you were talking about, about $4.8 million worth of development, right? And we're looking, we need to close the gap on 1.9. And I realize this is a big policy decision for the council. If out of 4.8, give or take, give about 1.9, you know, that's money that we can't collect back from property taxes, but is that the light and power loan, is that the $500,000 a second penny money that you have in there, right? So it might be, I don't think waiting until the next meeting, if this, if that helps the council feel more comfortable about it, I, I don't see our costs exceeding the $500,000 for that time.
And you, that'll give you time to have the calculations for the other scenarios. Now to throw another question out there, Jim, I know you said next month, could you get some information maybe back to the council in a couple of weeks on, so that might also help give us an idea of what direction other cities are going to help guide us?
We'll get something by then, in about 10 days. And then the most interest we've heard or trying to, on multifamily would be the Block Five, because it's the easiest one to build or try to get things up the fastest to meet the community need in housing, so Block Five is.
I, I just think that is good so that we can be informed from different scenarios, in my opinion. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks.
So what you're asking is, I'd like to bring back some information, other communities, I'll probably keep them, you know, just go A, B, C, but I'll bring back what they're doing relative to, similar to a builder's TIF.
Counselor Ward.
And the, adding the Block One into the calculations, is that a minimal sort of effect because there aren't multifamily unit, you know, because it's just one business?
Ideally, we'd like to see two in there, I mean, it's, they're just over one acre lots if I remember correctly.
Total of five acres, 1.92 buildable because of the gas, gas flying through there. So we can do two lots or one big one.
Ideally, two businesses in there, I mean, could be a decent property tax value that comes out of that, there could be the commercial rate. I guess another balancing act that we have in this, this whole mix is, you know, originally we were hoping that the TIF would help pay for some of the park development costs. And so, you know, balancing all that out, how much do we need for infrastructure, which I'd argue is first, how much do we need for development of, of the, for the developers and then what do we need for the park? What's that magic kind of sweet spot in there to make those numbers all work?
Well, I think, I think as the mayor asked, if we could see scenarios where each combination of blocks were incorporated and some consideration for park costs and not park costs, I know there's a lot of variables in there, but just so we can make a good decision. Because this is, I mean, it is, and unfortunately, we're in an economic situation where we kind of, if we want to meet the housing need of our community, we will have to play a little bit closer to the line than we'd probably like to.
Yeah, and, and I agree, I just would rather have as much information as possible, make an educated decision on different scenarios instead of running into it with this, then coming back and, and not having options that, because we've already taken them off the table, is my point. I think if we can put our nose to the ground and get it done in two weeks, it'd be fantastic.
Counselor Holland.
Jim, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, but those two lots, are they promising lots?
The commercial lots?
We haven't really started promoting them a lot, we do have some interest on it.
Yeah, because they're on the main street or the.
The highway, it just depends, you know, how much develop a lot we have there. It is easy access and it is visible from the highway. There is that limiting factor of the gas line, so depending where you put parcel one or two, you can only put concrete over that versus actually a building. But there will be interest, so we have a list working with the city of companies to go ask, we have one or two other developments around first.
Thank you.
So, so if we want to look at this in two weeks, we table it tonight, is that what we would do, or postpone it? What's the right thing to do, council? Postpone it and we have to postpone it till a specific date, is that right? Or not?
Yeah, to, to be postponed to the next meeting.
So I guess I would move to postpone till, till our next meeting.
Motion to postpone to the next meeting, which will be May, May 20th? By Counsel Price, second by Counsel Holland, any other discussion on that? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. We have next item. We will have the Human Relations Commission appointments. Let me get to my spot. So we have three terms coming open on the Human Relations Commission. Human Relations Commission is for two, three-year terms and one, one-year student term. Over the last few weeks, the city has been, had open advertising for those positions on the city website, council meetings, social media. We, the ordinance states that the commission's terms expire the first Monday in May, so that would be today. And in, and three individuals have submitted expression of interest form to serve on the three Human Relations Commissions. Those three members are Jaden Ford, Dwayne Williams, and Max Mickelson. Therefore, I recommend appointment to the, to the commission of the council for Jaden Ford, Dwayne Williams, and Max Mickelson. I do have noted here designated Max Mickelson as the, the one-year student position, as he is a full-time student at University of South Dakota, just will be going into his senior year, so he'll still be a student as, going into the next school year as well. So is there any visitors to be heard on that? To the council, any comments, questions? Motion to approve by Counsel Humphrey. Second by Counsel Genoine. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item will be for the Library Board of Trustees appointments. For the Library Board of Trustees, we had, there was three applicants, four applicants, thank you, John, just trying to get through this on my screen. Four applicants with two, with one term expiring and another term being vacated by a member being, moving out of the community. Therefore, out of the applicants that were received, I recommend to the appointment of the council for the incumbent of Katie Beam to resume another role, which I also believe will be her final term, because this does have term limits, correct? John?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke here, this one's in the wrong file, we only had three applicants, sorry.
There are three applicants, okay.
Yes, the Library Board did adopt term limits, probably, excuse me, seven, eight years ago, so they can serve three, three-year terms.
That's, okay. I wasn't off my rocker. There, there, there's three submitted, so I'd recommend to appoint Katie Beam on the current board as she is filling the role nicely right now and this will be her final term, I do believe. And then the other one I'd recommend for the appointment be Jaclyn Wilber, as she also will bring a lot of library experience, because she has extensive library background on board for the Library Board. Are there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion? Motion approved by Counsel.
I have a clarification for the minutes, are both of these terms the same length?
Oh, thank you for that. No, the, I would have Katie Beam starting another term and then Jaclyn would be filling the vacant role. Does that make sense? Steve, you still approve that? So there's a motion approved by Counsel Ward. Is there a second on that already? Second by Counsel Helwig, any other discussion? Thank you, Counsel Lottler. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item be the Housing Authority Commission. The Housing Authority, we had five applicants for one position, that one position is also vacated by an individual on the, currently serving on the board, so this is not a full term, but it'd be filling the remainder of the term. Out of those, the Housing Authority Board is comprised of five citizens and one seat is reserved for the program participant, this seat, correct me if I'm wrong, John, is not the program participant that, that vacated. Okay. So the term will be remaining for, it looks like Catherine Johnson who resigned, and that'll be then to fill the term till 2025. Out of the five applicants I selected to submit to the council, Rod Oberly, Rod Oberly used to own several rental properties in town, no longer does not, so he also doesn't have any potential conflicts, but he does have a background as, as a previous landlord and has some knowledge in that background, like to serve on the Housing Authority Commission. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion? Your motion? Motion approved by Counsel Helwig. Second, I'm gonna give that to Counsel Ward? Oh, Counsel Murrah. I just heard a voice, a deep voice over that direction. So Counsel Helwig, motion, second by Counsel Murrah, any other discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. I do want to make note, thank you to the council members that did reach out to me and solicit feedback, I appreciate that. Next item, we have a request to close Rose Street from Coyote Village, North Dakota Dome on August 23rd, USD's move-in day.
Awesome, thank you. So the University of South Dakota has requested to close Rose Street between Coyote Village, located at 901 North Rose Street and the Dakota Dome during USD's move-in day event on Friday, August 23rd, 2024, from 5:00 AM to 4:00 PM. This is a, similar to past requests that have been submitted. Traffic control for the move-ins requires assistance of USD, the city, and DOT. The main request for this closure is due to safety concerns of traffic on Rose Street. These closures also do not directly impact the property owner's ability to access their property. The police, fire, and EMS departments have all been notified of the closure request and there are no safety concerns at present. Traffic Solutions will provide barricade setup and removal for the event and the USD Police Department will further assist in picking up any cones and/or barricades at the event's conclusion. Because USD is a state entity, it cannot complete the standard hold harmless and indemnification agreement. So in this memo, there is the following language that is at the bottom of this, at the bottom of the memo, to be part of the street closure consideration for this to take place, and the administration recommends the approval for the closure of the, of these streets.
Thank you, any visitors to be heard? Seeing none, council for discussion? Motion? Motion approved by Counsel Helwig, and second by Counsel Humphrey, any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item, we request to close Plum Street from East Cherry Street to South Dakota Highway 50 on the same date for USD's move-in.
So this is again for, requested by the University of South Dakota, this is gonna be the same event with the move-in date, the only difference is going to be the closings of North Plum Street from East Cherry Street to Highway 50 from 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM and it's gonna include the same personnel and for this, it's gonna also include the same hold harmless and indemnification agreement and with this, the administration recommends that the city council approve the request for these street closures.
Thank you, any visitors to be heard? Council for discussion? I got a quick question. Just for sake and ease, it's not possible for us to put all the same event, different roads on the same item?
We have some years, I think just the difference in times is why we tend to split them up. They use different hours for Rose Street versus for North Plum, so we'll split it that way.
Okay. Just curious, just a question to ask. Okay. Any discussion? Motion approved by Counsel Helwig. Second by Counsel Humphrey, any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item, close another street, Main Street from Vermillion High School to High Street for the D-Day's Parade on October 12th.
The Dakota Days Committee has submitted a request to close Main Street from Vermillion High School Parking Lot to High Street and High Street from West Main Street to National Street for routing and/or staging the Dakota Days Parade on Saturday, October 12th, 2024. And this is gonna be from 7:30 AM until 12:00 PM. The parade will begin at 9:00 AM at the intersection of Anderson and East Main Streets at the high school parking lot as it provides a large amount of space to stage floats and ban buses. The application did not indicate volunteers for pickup after the parade, it has been let known and agreed upon by the applicant that USD will be responsible for the cleanup and in past instances, they have just assigned specific groups to be responsible for these cleanups. Bar owners have taken an active role in monitoring their patrons during the parade, which has helped to minimize past concerns. While it is not a charge of the Dakota Days Committee, it is hoped that bar owners will again actively participate when possible and appropriate in controlling their patrons during the parade. The police, fire, EMS, and. The police, fire, EMS, and street departments have been notified of the street closure request and had no concerns at this time. Administration recommends closure of the streets for the Dakota Days Parade.
Any visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion? Council Genoine?
I'm curious, the parade begins at Anderson and Main, but that is outside of the bounds of this closure. Do you know why that is? What?
So they use the main, what I'll call the main high school parking lot. The east one is where a lot of it's staged, and so you're half a block east of Anderson. So they're okay that way, because Anderson's where Grace Baptist Church on the one side and the house is on the other side.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Council Holland?
This is a rowing closure, is that right?
I'm sorry, what was that?
This is, what you're thinking of, Council Member Holland, is the high school homecoming parade. We use it because it's smaller, about 20 entries. We use a rowing closure for that one, but for Dakota Days, we, the police, streets, and everybody, they're all marked off and blocked.
Any discussion? Council Murrah?
This is a complaint from last year, so whoever needs to go talk to the, whether it be John or Alex, it was bad downtown last year. The crowd kept creeping closer and closer to the middle of the street. There were bands walking through high schoolers that couldn't even do their... A lot of the bands do dances, basically, when they're doing their music, and vehicles going through, so there needs to be a boundary set somehow down there, so that doesn't happen, because little kids are actually running out on the street in front of vehicles. So I don't know how we correct that, but somebody at USD, on this USD, the D-Day's thing, it needs to be taken care of.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion approved by Council Ward, and second by Council Hallig. Any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item. We're gonna request to close a section of an alleyway between Center Street and City Hall on May 31st for Packard's Group's final Friday art reception.
Packard Group will be holding their final Friday art reception on the evening of Friday, May 31st, 2024. It's been requested that the alley between Center Street and the West City Hall Parking Lot be closed from 4:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. on that evening. To enhance, this was just done to enhance the safety of the local pedestrians that are gonna be there, and mainly because they're gonna be having a temporary tent set up on the grass, and that's gonna provide shade for the visitors during the event. And then furthermore, there's only gonna be a small portion that will be barricaded, otherwise the remainder of the street will be accessible to the public. The African States that they will be responsible for the cleanup and taking down of the temporary tent, sweeping the area, removing trash, and removing the barricades after the event ends. The street, police, fire, EMS, and street departments have been notified of the street closure request, and there are no concerns at this time. Administration recommends that the city council approve the temporary closing of the alley between Center Street and the West City Hall Parking Lot.
Thank you. Any visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion? Motion approved by Council Humphrey. Second by Council Genoine. Any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item, we have an agreement for AWAS project system.
Thank you. For the past few years, the city has been working on completing the replacement for the AWAS system at the airport. The city has already awarded the bid for this, and also contracted with Helms and Associates for the construction administration. The item that you're considering tonight would be for the grant agreement with the state, as far as funding their portion of the project, which would be 5% of the total cost. This agreement, the city has entered similar agreements to this in prior years for different projects. The most recent one was the construction of the, or the reconstruction of the taxiway along the hangers. Again, this grant will be for the construction of the AWAS. Administration recommends authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with the DOT and to sign any other future documents related to grant number 3-46-0056-020-2024.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard? Council for discussion? Motion approved by Council Holland. Second?
Second.
Second by Council Genoine. Any discussion?
I got a question, Jose.
Go ahead.
Can you tell me that number again, please?
It's in the memo.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item for Jose, we have declared vehicles and equipment surplus.
Thank you.
You have photos this time for us, correct?
If you want me to put them up there, yeah. So as part of the equipment replacement schedule, we do, once a year, this is John's favorite time of the year, when we actually surplus vehicles and go ahead and sell them. So in this instance, we do have a list of, let me see, eight vehicles or trailers that we're gonna be selling. They are listed in there, but they do range, we have three trailers from 2001 through 1972. We do have two pickup trucks, both of them are 2009 pickup trucks. We have a Skid Loader that's also going out to sale, that's a 2009 Skid Loader, and we have two police vehicles that are both 2021 vehicles. What we're asking is for the council to consider this, this list of equipment, surplus it, and then the city will be, staff will be contacting Purple Wave and sending all of these vehicles out for sale through Purple Wave, which is an online auction site. The sale proceeds from the equipment will go to the Equipment Replacement Fund or to the funds that originally purchased equipment vehicle/vehicle. Administration recommends declaring the above-listed equipment as surplus and allowing staff to contact, contract with Purple Wave for the sale of the vehicle/equipment through an online auction.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion? Council Holland?
The pictures are all pristine. Are they really in that good a shape, or did you...
No, actually, the vehicles are in good shape, so.
That's amazing.
Except some of the trailers, but they're pretty old, so.
Any other discussion?
Motion approved by Council Price. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Ward. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item, we have bid openings for East Clark Street Improvement Project.
Thank you. So the city in the past has identified the need to reconstruct East Clark from East Plum to East, sorry, from North Plum to North Dakota Street. This project was going to be completed by using two, or two types of funding, three types of funding if you consider the city's stip funds, but essentially, we were gonna be using half a million dollars of community development block grant, which was awarded in September 2023, and 1.5 million dollar state transportation block grant, which was awarded in February 2024. However, the bids were to be opened on April 24th. Just prior to that, the state, the GOED office contacted us and told us that there were some items, some grant items with regards to the CDBG grant that needed to be included in the specifications, so at that point, we had to postpone the opening of the bids, and we did do that. We postponed it to May 8th. However, with that being said, then we also had to push the award, which is what the council would have been considering tonight. So what staff is recommending is to table the bid opening for further consideration until May 20th, when staff would be coming over with the actual bids for consideration by the council and hopefully an award at that time.
Thank you. Any visitors to be heard? Council for discussion?
Could I suggest we postpone?
I wasn't sure if it's postponed table.
Can that be a correct word? Correct.
Sorry.
Motion to postpone till May 20th, is that correct?
May 20th, yes.
Yep. There's a second by Council Holland. Any other discussion? All's in favor, postpone the bid opening, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item will be a chip seal project.
Thank you. So chip sealing, this very cost-effective way for the city to maintain our roads and add life to them. It's very inexpensive. It's a very quick and easy process. We have done it for decades. I've done it for 15 years, and I'm pretty sure we've done it for way longer than that before. We opened bids on this project on April 25th. We received two bids. At that time, the low bid was from Top Coat of Yankton on the amount of $130,245.76. The other bid was from Road Guy out of Yankton as well, and their bid was for the amount of $163,613.40. A large portion of the 2024 chip sealing project will be occurring in the portion of Vermillion, that's below the Bluff, west of Dakota Street, south of the Bluff. So pretty much all of that area is going to be chip sealed. The contract calls for the project to be completed by September 1st, 2024. The city budgeted $165,000 for chip seal. The money covers the chip sealing, the purchase of the chips for next year's project, and the purchase of material for seal cracking. The low bid for the project this year came in higher than the amount that we typically allot for chip sealing itself. However, we will be just reducing the amount of crack sealing material that we purchase, and that between those two numbers, we should be able to cover everything as far as the actual contract cost. Administration recommends awarding the 2024 chip seal contract to Top Coat for $130,245.76.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard? Council for discussion? Motion approved by Council Ward. Second?
Second.
Second by Council Holland. Any other discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
What ever happened to that chip seal procedure we were looking at with Sioux Falls? That was a different mixture?
So the slurry seal, it's a little bit more expensive than the chip seal. We'll probably be reusing it again. It's just that we wanted to, we usually can get more bang with the chip seal as far as the amount of streets that we can do, but more than likely, we'll be bringing up another slurry seal project probably either next year or the following year.
It's designed, I mean, in theory, it lasts longer, is that right?
Yeah, yep, it's supposed to last longer, yeah.
But we've only had a year on it now, is that right?
Yep, we've only done it for a year.
Thank you.
Next item will be fuel quotes, Kay.
Thank you. So we received four fuel quotes. The low bid for all four of them were from FS New Century, which for the 10th percent gasoline, it was $2.756. Unleaded gasoline was $3.087. The diesel number two dyed was $2.649, and number two diesel fuel clear, $2.926.
Any visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion? I notice this is a new person, and that's not the norm, and considerably lower than the others. Is that accurate?
That seems to be, yes.
Just, are they new? I mean, they haven't been bidding before. Do we know?
I guess I'm not sure about this company in particular, but we put bids out, and whoever wants to bid can put a bid in.
Motion approved the low bid.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Murrah. Any other discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. City manager's report, John.
Thank you. Just a reminder, our Library Board, they have their monthly meeting coming up on Wednesday, May 15th at 6:00 p.m. Our city's Historic Preservation Commission is not meeting this month in May. They will be meeting next on June 12th. Our Edith B. Segres Vermillion Public Library is gonna be closed this Thursday, May 9th. They're conducting a staff in-service training and getting some preparations made for our summer reading program coming up. Just a reminder that it is election season, and that campaign signs are not permitted in the public right of way. The easiest way to remember that is the sign should be placed behind the sidewalk, so not between the sidewalk and the curb. Before you, you had two raffle notifications. St. Agnes, they did turn this in, but this was three weeks since their last meeting, and the event has come and gone, but nonetheless, we would still enter it into the minutes. They sold squares on a board for the Kentucky Derby. The squares were $25 each. The purchasers were randomly assigned a square on the board, and the winner of the approximate $500 prize was determined by which horse, Mistake Dan, won the Kentucky Derby, and the proceeds will go to the St. Agnes Parent Teacher Association. The other raffle notification came in today, and that's the Boys and Girls Club. They are selling raffle tickets at $50 each. They'll start their sales on June 24th, and they'll run until August 1st. The prize is a 10-by-12 shed that has a roll-up door and windows. It's valued at approximately $6,500, and the drawing will be at 5:30 on August 1st during one of the Thursday on the Platts events, which you will get to hear at your next meeting when Alex will be closing more streets.
Thank you, John. Next item, invoices. Any chance to review the bills? So are there any questions or comments? Council Price?
I have a question. Katie, what is number 79? 79 Joanne Stores? Are we buying fabric?
No, it's probably a prescription, or a subscription from, for like the library, for like their magazines that they have.
Oh, okay. Oh, got it, okay. We'll move repair bills. Oh, do you have one? I will wait to make my motion.
Council Genoine?
I was actually gonna ask about 78. Startup money?
That's for the pool.
Okay.
So what we do is we write a check to him, he cashes it, because there's no other way to write a check and get cash. So he cashes it, and then he puts it in the pool bag, and at the end of the year, we give it back. So it's still on city premises.
We'll move repair bills.
Motion to pay the bills. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Genoine. Any other discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item we have is the consensus agenda. First one is to set a public hearing date for May 20th, 2024, for a special daily malt beverage license for Thursday on the Platts. And the second item is to set a public hearing date for May 20th, 2024, for retail on-off wine insider license, and retail on-off malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Mamacita's LLC at 5 East Cherry Street. That is all the consensus agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consensus agenda by Council Price. Second by Council Humphrey.
Any other discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries. There's all in the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Council Murrah in a second.
Aye.